All right, we're on the air. Bring to order the July 20th Council Infrastructure Committee. And on tonight's agenda, we have three items, really. So we'll start with the first one, which is AB 7250, the Transportation Benefit District. And just a little background on that. We worked, we discussed this a little bit at work session. And work session was kind of lightly attended, if I remember right. But you were, you were there. You were not there, okay? Paul and I was there. There were three people weren't there. There was only four of us there. So a lot of people missed out on that presentation. And what it was, there was a presentation of, from an expert that could tell you the details of forming a tran, you know, a benefit district. Didn't get into the pros, the cons, you know, the political nature, that kind of stuff. It was just more like the technical nature of, these are steps you have to do. You have the authority to do it from, you know, RWC and so forth. So it's kind of in that way. And I know, I asked a few questions to others, but I didn't ask, I don't think, the right questions, because I didn't quite understand how it was coming to us and what really the question was, you know, how it was moving forward from that point. And after, at the end of that, Stacy mentioned that this, it would go to infrastructure for public comment, because that, that session also was very packed and public comment was reduced time-wise and opportunity-wise. So it's unfortunate no one's here for a public comment, because that's what we wanted to get to. Mainly thing tonight was to get some public comment on, on this, because like I say, it was limited that time. So it's kind of interesting how we're sitting here is, so it went from our work session to here. And I'm not sure of the exact, exact path of exactly how we're supposed to go forward. Because it wasn't like really clear from the council we're sent, you know, like, here's the path, come to us. We sent, we, yeah, we, we then make a decision in recommendation of the council. Wasn't quite that clear. So I think we have time to work on this, ask some questions, get to some of the things I think that weren't said from the administration side that I think you can shed some light on, and, and get some discussion going about that. So tonight, I'd like to get all the information out on the table. Without people here to comment, I don't have a problem to hold this another month till next month before we send it back to council. I'm not seeing anything that says it's on a rush with everything else that's going on at council. I'm not seeing that. So if we, at least maybe the three of us can...
Get all the questions out?
Yeah, get all the questions out, really feel what, what we think it might do, might not do, you know, and some of the, you know, some of the political questions on, you know, benefits and, and, or lack thereof, right? So if we take that approach for now, I think I'd like to start with Emily giving us a little more background, a little more administration side on that.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure. And then, and then, then we'll kind of start doing those things. And you missed the presentation, but that was in your packet.
Oh, it's in there. Yeah, I did it.
So you saw that, at least. So you're up on date on that, right?
The question I had was, was there any public emails or comments or questions about the presentation work session? Nothing's come through yet.
Nothing's come through to me, no. Yeah, so, and, yeah, so nothing really. So if that sounds okay with the two of you?
Perfect.
We'll go with that, and we'll let Emily start, and we'll start our discussion.
Okay, fantastic. So what I think I'll do is try to connect some dots on how we got here. And I apologize as well if I'm repeating something. I also wasn't at the July 10th work session.
I didn't know that, that's awful.
And, and I have not yet had time to watch the whole meeting, so I, I'm pinching it a little bit. So how we got here, in my opinion, is that we've been studying transportation needs in the community for quite some time. We've been exploring different ways to fund capital improvements for, for our transportation system. You know the story around the Traffic Task Force and leaning to the recommendation to put forward the bond levy. And you know that that, while it was majority supported, did not pass. And therefore, we were still left in a position where we don't have a new funding source for capital projects. And as we've seen from our financial modeling, we have a long list of capital project needs. And we have certainly constrained revenue sources, either by statutory limitations in how they can be used, or by the way in which they affect our operating budget. So do they cause us to incur debt? And how much debt can we sustain, right, over time? And so every funding source needs to be looked at carefully before we choose to use that potential tool. So in an effort to examine the city's financial health, and to provide you with a better model so we could play out scenarios, we took a, a model and some summaries of potential new revenue sources to the Ad Hoc Financial Committee of the council. And we had a couple of discussions that, that talked about what's our revenue situation currently? What does revenue growth or decline look like over time? What are some potential ways to mitigate where the expenditure and revenue lines cross? How do we continue to fund all the different types of capital asset needs? And one of those funding methods that was discussed included forming a transportation benefit district as a potential tool to raise some revenue. You can utilize that revenue in a few different ways. One of the most common, though, is to help a municipality pay the debt service on the projects that it wishes to fund. And there are a number of cities across the state that have had very good success at the ballot, getting TBD, as we call it, passed, and are utilizing that tool to help them provide for improvements in their communities. Most of those cities, as far as I've seen, fund their TBD through a vehicle license fee. Some also use an incremental sales tax increase. And so there are, there are a lot of different options along those lines as well, but those are the two most popular. And I think this tool was being recommended for a couple of reasons. One is because we have seen that it has had good success at the ballot. It would provide a stable, a fairly stable source of revenue for the city to do more capital projects potentially. I don't think that Ad Hoc Committee or city staff believes that this is the, the only revenue source that, that we might look to. It's a matter of how, how many capital projects, how much debt service, you know, how much borrowing do we want to do? And certainly, for administrations sort of advocate for always keeping our revenue pie diverse. So this would add another tool in that portfolio. So that is how we got here. We have capital needs, we have limited ability to pay for those, and we have a desire, I think, to do more. But that will mean that we will need more revenue in order to do it. Financial Committee had discussed various ways that we could gather that additional revenue. This is one of those potential methods, and the city administration has recommended it.
You mentioned a couple of times that you've discussed a couple of different ways, but you haven't mentioned what those other options are.
Other options? I think we've discussed, you know, the, the bond levy approach, we've discussed the vehicle license fee, we've discussed increments of kind of business license fees. Help me out, committee members.
Yeah.
There were, there's a long list in the...
Was it in the packet too, though?
Not, no.
I don't think it's in the packet.
Then I read it somewhere today, somewhere else today. But there was about...
Other than a TPD, I mean, that's what I'm saying. Because most of those you mentioned are TPD to do them.
Mr. Chair, what might be helpful is if, Emily may know how to do this, the Ad Hoc Committee's sort of been working off to the side. It might be, and I don't know what venue or how it would happen, but for somebody to give an update of what they've been talking about.
Yeah, Jen provided in the July 17th council packet a memo...
Okay.
That, and I actually think it went out even in an earlier packet.
That's probably where I read it. And that did list all of the different, some of the different things that were being talked about there.
We also touched upon it during the retreat.
Yes, and during the retreat, it was...
Jen went over that.
Mm-hmm.
It was really like a menu of all the different things that are available to cities, and what are we not using right now? And so this, to me, feels like we're getting educated.
And Bill, for your benefit, really for me to be on that Finance Committee, and I know we want to call it Ad Hoc long-term, I'm going to call it the Finance Committee.
Yes.
A lot of it was informational. It was getting information, talking about getting educated, learning more about the options, learning about the model, asking questions about the financial model, the baseline model. We didn't, we didn't talk policy. It was getting us educated. And, and, and Tola was the other member, along with Mary Lou and I. And so that, as the administration has a plan and wanted to continue to move forward, they were looking for a check-in from us. We didn't take any votes. It was no formal policy conversations. It was more, my, my reaction was, is, okay, I understand this. I don't know what the outcome is going to be, or what decisions make sense, but I understand the tools, I understand why they're on the table, why we're talking about them. But I'm going to have to look at a specific applications, implementations, and, and specific proposals before, you know, that's when we'll really roll up our sleeves, and we try to apply some of these ideas. And this is, and I still see this TBD conversation as still along that path, because it isn't about a specific operational or capital plan. It's, it's for the reasons more general that Emily, you mentioned earlier. We have a backlog, we know we do. We tried one method, it didn't work. This is another method that has, it's different.
Yeah.
Let's have a conversation about it. We certainly have a backlog without full funding for what needs to be done.
Right. And I may just reference that the alternative revenue options are shown on page 30. Sorry, it's 30 in the, as it was in the packet, but page 27 of that financial resources and forecasting book that Jen's reviewed at retreat and elsewhere, Ad Hoc.
Just a process question, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
So Emily, if the TBD element is here, I do think I remember that Council President Goodman had asked for this one to come at a leadership meeting, and so we have this one. But for all of the other items that are in there, there's probably some other venue, either services or here, depending on what the money would be raised to use, that we'll do the same sort of deep dive into what each of these other financing mechanisms are.
We could. That, that direction hasn't been given yet.
We haven't gotten that far yet.
Yeah, there, the council has not had a conversation about preference of, over, you know, one source versus another, but city administration felt it was important to start to keep, keep that dialogue going. And so this is the, the first one that, that we would recommend be explored. And there, there are certainly ways that we could plug potential numbers into a model and kind of talk about the way each source generates money and how much. And so you get a sense of what, what could be funded. That's also in Jen's resource book, too.
Great.
Okay.
So I think, just to add to Chairman's comments at the beginning, what we're hoping to get, despite the fact that the agenda bill, Jen Bell says two things. It says, review and please provide some comment and, you know, help provide some direction on where you want to go. It also says that this would return on August 7th. And I just want to echo that, that there, there is an urgency other than we want to keep moving that dialogue forward. But we're, we're here tonight to take down any questions you have, try to answer the ones that we can, and learn a little bit more about where your interests might be. One thing that I hope that Alice, the bond attorney, talked about is the, it is typical for organizations to write the ordinance language such that you have flexibility in applying the tool to multitude of projects. Those projects by state statute have to be listed in your transportation plan. But it is typical for a municipality to just simply say, form the TBD for the purpose of funding projects listed on our capital plan. If you wanted to better understand how much could be generated, and therefore, how much would be available to put to priority projects, that is also something that we could begin to tease out, have some conversations around. This, as I said, does not fund our whole capital plan. And so I think it's clear that you would have to have an understanding of which projects you want to apply it to.
Okay. So with that lead-in, do you have any questions you want to start with at this time?
Sure. So I did not attend the work session, but did read through the materials today and a couple of questions. And actually, I think when I'm looking at them and hearing sort of where we are in the conversation now, it makes more sense to me. I'm not sure I'm looking for an answer tonight. I'm just kind of looking to give you questions, expecting that at a next meeting, maybe we'll get all of the answers back. So anyway, there was some language in there that talked about different parties contributing to the Transportation Benefit District. I could not really see how the private sector component worked. And so I understand how the citizen component would work, or the car owner, how they would pay, but how does that private sector fit in, in this model? There was a talk about allowing for rebates, and there was a lot of language around that, when it could be allowed and who it could be allowed for. How would that apply to a city of our size? And in terms of social equity and justice, how could we use these rebates to make sure that we're not putting this burden on those that can least afford it? I was really excited to see that tolling showed up. Because tolling is actually something our city might want to talk about. So how is tolling a city street covered under a TBD? What exactly does that mean or look like? There was talk about ad valorem property tax. Is that a way for us to exclude those that are on fixed income from having to pay these additional fees or taxes? And if they are excluded from paying it, do they pay it later on? Say at a time that a vehicle is sold, or the time that a property is sold, depending on how this is structured? So that it's not a lost tax, it's more of a deferred tax collection? And my other questions, now that I look at them, are probably a little too far out. For one thing, I wanted to understand exactly what we would use this for. I mean, would we say, we're putting this in because we're going to prioritize projects that improve local mobility versus regional or pass-through mobility? Because I did see that mixed in there, but I'd save that till another conversation when we're talking about specific projects. On the first slide of the consultant's presentation for a city TBD, it talks about funding projects that are regional or statewide significance. How does that apply in a city context, when a city does a TBD? I'm assuming it doesn't mean that we would be funding or providing funds to State Route 900 or other improvements like that. Just wasn't sure.
Yeah, it's, I think it's, it's allowable to do that, but there's language in the RCW that says you have to compare with the owner entity.
Yeah, and for me, there's a policy question there. Why would our small tax base ever want to pay into a state route facility unless we were getting a specific local benefit, like a slip lane or something like that? So there's a council policy question piece in there.
So, and, and what I would also say to that is, I think there have been some communities that have used it to help pay for incremental increases in service delivery for transit, for example?
Yeah. So one of the things that I was kind of poking around at in our comp plan today, said that if State Route 900 were to hit a certain level of service, it would be required to put busing on. And would it be, my question, I don't need the answer. Would it be possible to use TBD funding to get the busing? So that, to me, does make sense. And then the rest of what I had to talk about really has, it's a future conversation of, if this is a funding mechanism with other funding mechanisms, how would we pick projects, blah, blah, blah? So I'll leave that to another day.
Paul, you have, you like to throw out to start?
I think, I'd like to have a conversation about the, the, the different revenue, new revenue options within TBD, and, and some were mentioned already, of course. I, I think what we're seeing is the administration is suggesting that we, a sales tax, which is something that has to go to a vote. But we know that there's a car tab, we know that there's other options like a, like the tolling, for example. And I think it'd be really good to have a conversation about the other funding options for transportation and how those differ for our citizens. And I don't think that's a complex conversation, but we should have it out on the table. So we tried a bond last year, which is directly, is paid for by property owners. It's right, property taxes. And, and so everybody who owns property, real, real, real property, would participate in this. And these options, like the sales tax one, is, is obviously, it's, it's anybody, it's indiscriminate, it's whoever, you know, you know, makes a purchase, or does any, does any transaction here in the city, or any business based in the city. So it's not just citizens, it's, it's, it's guests and tourists and just any customer of any, any business, anybody doing business in Issaquah. But at the same time, sales tax, you know, I think at a larger level, also has an implication in terms of, you know, how, how equitable is it? And then there's the car tab. I think, so I think having a conversation, just really kind of lay out very clearly what the impact in terms of, who would, who would it impact? How would it impact them? And I don't think those are complex, but I think we, if we're going to continue and specifically talk about options within a TBD, it should be done within the context, I think, of all the various options that we have. That's, that's one.
Could, could we get that in a kind of a table format that says tax, and then who pays, and then a commentary about the, and...
Absolutely. It would be easy to do. Yes, Alice laid out the financing sources for a TBD in her presentation, and Jen, in that financial modeling book, tried to identify who the payer would be.
I think that's...
But I also hear this, a desire to go into more depth on what does that mean then, in terms of equity and just spell that out in a little bit greater detail. We can certainly do that in a table. And I, I think we can couple that also with what would be generated, because I suspect that's going to be part of your decision.
Absolutely. That's going to be my next question as well.
Because each source generates a different amount, and so...
Very important.
You know, if something has more of an impact on our residents, more so than it does from an external visitor, right? But if the fee to the resident on this funding source is less than, you know, some other source, then that might not matter as much.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, and because it was just a year ago that we had the vote about a bond, and, saying we will, but hypothetically, we could go down the path about a vote on a TBD sales tax, right? So it's the same people, we're asking them a different question. And there were considerations that were made on the bond vote, and that's why, I think, it has to be spelled out very clearly. And I would like to have that part of this process that we're going through, this legislative process, to have, so it's not just all the options within a TBD, but, but, but also include, like the bond. I think, well, I know this answer, it was maybe asked earlier in the last couple of weeks, or one of the first times it came up. Again, the administration, and this is just an example, it's not a commitment to anything, has put out there two cents, or, excuse me, tenths of one percent potential. And do we, at this point, do we have a forecast of what that would mean?
Yes.
And what that would raise? Not, not at a per capita or household level, but more just total revenue at this point?
Yes, let me find. In Jen's resource manual says, this option being the TBD sales tax base increases the city's sales tax rate by 0.2. So she has used that as the assumption in this model.
Right.
For transportation would generate revenues of approximately 2.2 million annually over a 10-year period, therefore, it would generate $22 million.
Okay.
Just a follow-up question?
Just a number, and, and then, then...
Let her finish.
Does this, and what kind of restrictions then exist? I think that you and I had just before the meeting started, or somehow maybe you mentioned it to me somewhere, you know, can this money be used to pay a debt obligation?
Yes.
And, and so that, that's a very interesting scenario, because as the Finance Committee heard a couple of times, maybe Bill, you've only heard once, but you'll hear, you know, I'm oversimplifying it. Like, we have technically a line of credit, but where there's a certain amount that we can borrow without, in, in the form of a councilmatic bond, for, for example. Problem with that, there's no new revenue source. You have to pay for it out of your cash flow. And so you have to make, you know, decisions about what your priorities are, what you're going to do. But this would be potentially a vehicle to actually pay that debt obligation, and then it's no longer, the revenue available, if we did a councilmatic bond, wouldn't be 2.2 million a year. That would be, that could, that could be debt service a year.
Right.
Which would actually translate into something significant, much more significant in terms of monies that we could use for transportation projects. I think that narrative, I think that's, that should be told. And the last thing I wanted to mention, it's my understanding about the rebates, that it only applies to cities where they have 500,000 people or more, so they don't apply to us. It's like the Seattle chapter of the law.
Oh, question, Emily. When we're talking about the table and all the different types of funding mechanisms you can use under the Transportation Benefit District, talking about the sales tax, to me, understanding not just how it's collected and who pays the burden of that, what the consequences are, some sort of comment that says how stable it is. Because obviously, with the sales tax, counting on that, those revenues during recession and all the, they can change, whereas other, other, so some of those mechanisms may be less subject to economics ups and downs. It'd be interesting to know how they all rate on that kind of scale. Be great.
Since you weren't there at the last meeting, when they talked about tolls...
Stop saying that.
No, well, because you had the question on tolls, and your eyes got really big. And that question was asked, and the answer from her was, technically can be done, she's never known any place that it's ever done it.
Oh, nobody's done it.
Yeah. And, and so...
That's why I asked the question first. Nobody's done it.
So anyway, just, that's the answer we got, just so you knew that.
Yeah, I assumed that, because I'd done, I had done a little research about cities and tolls, and people don't do it. And, and actually, it's not that I'm in favor of tolls or not in favor. I just think if we're going to put options on the table and talk with the community, put all the options on the table, whole menu, including what a toll could look like, it would look like. So it's just, I'm intrigued by the concept, I guess, is what I would say. But thanks for clarification.
Yeah, just thanks for that. So I'm trying to think of anything else in the conversation that, because some of your questions were talked about a little bit in there, but not, not really too much. So I think you're clear on getting some of those things.
Yeah, thank you, this was helpful.
Yeah, and, and working on those. The ones I had were, were kind of more, a little bit more process-oriented, where, what I didn't realize, because we got right away into, it sounded like the city was recommending that...
Car tab tax?
No.
Oh.
No, a 2% sales tax. Because a car tab tax doesn't have to be voted on, but that would make about 400,000 a year. So, or, you know, what are you going to get? You know, $4 million over 10 years, it's, it's not going to, it's going to be dropping the bucket. So the car tab tax would not give you much, is, is an answer, information on that. And, but that doesn't have to be voted on. And I found it very interesting, and I'm glad she added, in our first packet, we had just the cities in King County that had some sort of TPD.
Yeah, this and everything like that.
And this year, and then in this one, she added everyone in King County, which was amazing to see, you know, some really little towns had TPDs, you know? But almost all of them had just a $20 car tab, doesn't have to be voted on, adds a little bit. And these small towns, I don't know how much they're collecting with that a year, it's not going to be much. But very few, but, but substantial, I'm more than I thought, actually do the 2% sales tax. So I found that, I mean, everywhere from Leavenworth has one, to, you know, Othello, you know? So it's, it was, it was, it was good to see how much was going on. And there were, there was good information in your... Um, and there were number, there was good information here also on ones that had tried to pass and had failed the passing of the sales tax, uh, or just get a little feel for that. So anyway, that was, uh.
Good addition.
Yeah, good addition. And, and I was kind of on process because I guess the question I didn't ask is hearing a little more discussion from the administration is what would be done first without any of the details is you would create the district. So you decided to create a district and then you create this district, but you have no, you know, you have no order, you have no marching orders, you know what it's going to do. Then the district itself, which I guess according to us would be us, right? Would then go and sort through, you know, what you would do within that district and those things, options you have and how to implement them. So it's kind of like, it's weird, it, it feels weird to me to say, we're going to create a taxing mechanism, but we're not going to talk about the taxing we're going to do until after we've created the mechanism to, to tax. And so it, that, that just feels, um, a little awkward to me. Go ahead, Paul, first.
Well, that's exactly why I asked the questions that I did, is, is let's talk about the end game and what we're trying to do. Yes, there's a process that going there that seems awkward, but, uh, even to take that step, I want to have a better understanding of, of what we might be doing.
Yeah. Because, because I, you know, I mean, just, just personally, when to create something that says we're going to do more taxing, just I, I feel, you know, it makes me uncomfortable very quickly, uh, because it's like, okay, we're deciding to tax, but we're not really, you know, because there's no point to do, making one unless you're going to tax something. I mean, there's got, that's, that's, that, to me, that's the only reason to create a district is to create a revenue, uh, somewhere or another. So that's what's got me kind of feeling a little awkward to, to where it's going to go, um, next. If that makes any sense.
Oh, that totally makes sense. I just have a comment after you're done.
Okay. So go ahead with your comment and then I.
So for me, I actually didn't share that sentiment. I actually thought that if the county could have the opportunity to do it, or the city, we ought to take advantage of the fact that it is a tool in the toolkit we could have and then trust the judgment of council to decide if we're going to use it or not. I'm more concerned that we lose the ability to even have it. So setting up a jurisdiction without understanding or deciding exactly what it's going to look like. I think these education sessions are great and I think people will start to think about where they are on the spectrum of what parts of this they like or don't like. But setting up the district to me, if somebody else could actually take that away from us, I think we should set up the district. I was comfortable not, um, not deciding how that district would be used as a new tax. Because I think, just like being a no tax, we got a proposal from administration and we walked it back. Council walked it back. And there was a lot of concern when the first proposal came out that council would say yes, and council actually walked it back. We can have a taxing jurisdiction, decide not to use, or taxing tool and decide not to use it. And I think if you don't get four, four out of seven council members comfortable with it, we won't ever use it. So I wasn't as concerned.
Okay. So I'm just thinking if there's any more questions, comments, because what, I think we're getting to the point of saying, we still have some concerns. More information, um, bring them back next month, continue the conversation. I'll definitely let the leadership know, um, you know, that we're kind of walking through this slowly.
Yeah. That's great.
Um, because I think, I think, like I say, that those were there, kind of had different interpretations of, of how we're all attacking that presentation, um, and how we're gathering information. So I think if we're good now on the questions, I think we're good to, to leave this for now. If anything else comes up in the next few days, because mine usually come up tomorrow morning, we'll just drop a note to Emily, you know, email, make sure me and I'll get it to Emily and, and add that to the, to the list of questions. Okay? Sound good, sound good? Okay? We got everything discussed on this item we want? Okay? So then I'll give public comment a chance, because that was the point of this, and I'm glad we have some actual public that showed up because we were feeling lonely a minute ago. So is anyone from the audience like to make a comment on the transportation benefit district? No? Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Uh, with that done, uh, we will move on to our second on our agenda, which is AB 7440, Transportation Advisory Board. Um, now this is something that's been with us for a little while. We've been batting it around. Last time we had, I think, kind of got it cornered ideologically, but we left it to Emily to actually write the words on the, on the paper for us and make it, you know, what we were talking about. I think she did that. So it's a good place to start. So I hope that you all read the ordinance here. And so let's start talking about that because this action, this item we'd like to pass on if we can. Um, so I want to make.
So the, the committee did, uh, review, I just want to clarify this before you launch in. I think the committee did have an opportunity to review a draft and there weren't substantive changes.
Right.
Uh, when it then went into the council, full council's packet to be then referred back here. Um, so.
Sorry.
I just wanted to clarify. I haven't made any changes, so if you're expecting any.
No.
Anything in there.
And, and I didn't send any comments to you because it looked good to me. So I actually saw, I wanted to say thank you because I think you did capture our thoughts quite well. I just want to verify with the two of you that.
Yeah.
And Paul, anything that was missed or not quite stated right for you? Or is this looking pretty good for you?
It is. I, the, our, the duties and responsibilities, I just think it'd be really good for the committee to talk to this.
Sounds good.
It's just, you know, it, this might just be a simple exercise.
Yeah.
But I think that's really where.
Where the meat is right there.
There's the structure of the organization, but this is the call to action, right? This is what, this is what, I want to make sure that we, we do the rigor of talking through each of these. I don't have, I, I've read them all and I've looked at them and I, and I understand them with one exception. I just, I did in particular want to talk a little bit about number five, the transportation impact analysis guidelines. I don't know a lot about those, but, and so we can go right there or, or Bill, I just, I just throw that out there as.
Well, I, I think you're running duties and responsibilities. So why don't we just start at the top of that section and work our way down and through, instead of going to the middle?
Okay.
Um, so, and it gets, the first paragraph just says basically duties of the board shall include the following.
You can do that. Yep. Yeah, can you pull up the packet?
Yeah, there you go. Thank you. There you go. Um, and she's getting that up. Basically duties, last, include the following, and it's, there's eight of them. Um, and that is the crux of, of this ordinance. The rest is all basically process and how that all comes together. So we should go through that, because that's what we talked about all those times of how, what, what did we really want this, um, committee to do and, and work on and not work on? And you got some pretty clear language in a couple of those sentences there. We'll wait to get that pulled up.
Which page do you want?
Um, page three of the ordinance. Down toward the bottom. Duties and responsibilities. And you can roll that up because it goes on to the next page. Why don't you roll that up and we'll get part of the next.
The stuff right there.
Right there. All right. So I think the first paragraph actually is important because it has a shall in there. So, um, I'm going to just read it. Transportation advisory board shall be concerned with matters of transportation policy and planning. It shall not play a role in the city's land development review process. But it kind of has a clear outline there on, on what you shall and shall not do in order, now, to start with. And then it gets into the details of a little more specific under that, under that policy and planning side. So that's looking good for everybody, right?
Can we just talk through, so transportation policy, transportation planning? Talk about transportation planning, what that entails and doesn't entail.
Sure. I think, uh, we spell that out a little bit, give it a little bit more detail in a subsequent bullet, uh, two, three, for example. So it was meant to keep the focus on the long-term, midterm, uh, planning efforts. So we talked about, um, the mobility master plan or the, uh, transportation element of the comp plan being examples, uh, down to, uh, maybe some involvement in a corridor plan that's, uh, meant to be longer-term implementation, require more, uh, time to develop, um, more engagement. It's, it's not as specific as what sort of, uh, access should, you know, a new development site have. It's not as pinpoint specific. It's more broadly, it's the plans that more broadly apply to the community or an area of the community.
Ask a question, Paul. You finished it. So, so you, let's get to some examples of that.
Sure.
So right now we're doing the, uh, community engagement and, and work on Newport Way.
Correct.
So how would that fit in there?
Yeah, that, that actual, how does that look? I, I'm, I, I don't know. Um, I could try to make something up on the fly here. But that, I, what I would say is that, uh, that is an example that, um, I think we did discuss in committee and one that I had in mind, that's a perfect example of a corridor study. The Gilman project that we have right now is another example. Um, it, these are projects that, uh, require synthesis of a lot of different information and a, and a lot of community engagement and will take quite a bit of time to plan and implement, construct. Um, so it's, it's, it's plans of that nature that I think we envisioned this group would touch.
And so it probably wouldn't be as involved in, say, the work we do under complete streets?
Correct.
Annual things of, you know, fixing sidewalks here, replacing these little pieces of infrastructure in those places. Those are pretty much decide what we're going to do and do them.
Correct. Or, or a road improvement that is, um, I, I don't know what scope to put on it, but more geographically limited, uh, you know, not, not meant to change substantially the character, um, doesn't have a lot of ambiguity about what features need to be there. We would, that doesn't mean that we don't have engagement on those things. It just means that's probably not a project that's suitable for this group to be engaged and we'd, we'd handle the needs on those projects elsewhere.
So let's go back to the example of Gilman and Newport. So the, the process for Newport has had a couple of citizen engagement meetings, there's, and that information is being synthesized, that's moving along a certain process. So where would this board be in relationship to that?
Sure. So, uh, one example might be that they would, uh, help to describe the type of engagement that they would find helpful to get on a project in order to work hand-in-hand with the consultants and our city engineers to, uh, design the project. Um, I, I think they would be involved from the get-go in saying, this is a project that, uh, we believe we should be involved with in helping to, uh, guide and, and, um, direct the consultants so that we get the outcomes that we're looking for. Because they're, they're also going to be the keepers of the, um, all of the other transportation plans, not geographic plans, but, uh, policy plans. So the, the transportation element of the comp plan. So they'd be able to say, we know what that, what that comp plan says, um, now what we need to do is extrapolate from that down to the detail level of this particular corridor. And so, um, they would infuse that, that knowledge into the, a scope of work with the consultants and the neighbors.
So in a timeframe, uh, in terms of a timeframe, so the administration or, or council could identify at a, at a highest level that we want to do a corridor study of Gilman Boulevard? And, and, but so early on, long before any engagement begins, you know, even.
Yep.
That's when their advice and input would be gathered?
Absolutely. They could help, they could help pinpoint which projects, um, they'd like to take part in. I, I think those should be readily apparent, just based on what we talked about as criteria. But, uh, then they could help to shape the scope of work for the RFP. They could help select the consultant even, uh, they could, um, help provide some input on what that community engagement looks like. And then as the information starts coming back in, they are the, the body that would help to synthesize it, make sure that that final report and final recommendations are in sync with the community, um, values and interests and, um, help vet the recommendations and fine tune them so that then they could be brought forward to whoever the decision maker is on that particular plan or project.
So, so my hope in, in, in one of the things that they'd be able to accomplish is to, to get us more proactive. So somehow, rather than waiting till the community is, you know.
Sure.
Needing something, that they're more engaged, that so by working with you guys, development and so forth, that they would have seen a number of years ago, all the development stuff going down in Newport. And they would have said, hey, we got a, they got a lot of stuff coming down here. We better start doing the corridor study here to get our design laid out. So then, you know, and, and we'd be maybe a couple of years ahead of where we are right now to have that going, okay, now we really want this, this stuff. And then when the developers actually, you know, needing to do their things, they could fit into that. Or at least we'd be further along than we are now, which is, you know, the developer's deciding what they're putting there. And then we're trying to design the corridor almost around them a little bit. So I'm hoping, yeah.
Yeah. I wouldn't quite phrase it that way, but yeah.
Yeah.
Understood your point.
But, but yeah. So somehow be more aware of those things proactively.
Sure.
So we could get ahead of the game. Yeah. Starts there. So that's what I see now. Yeah. And, and so by, you know, combining those things of, of, I mean, also it's not that they would be involved in land development review process.
Yeah.
But that information that comes from development side would be critical, them to know where items are coming and so forth.
Yes.
That's, that's, yeah, put us a little bit ahead of the ball versus right with it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The thoughts on planning and policy? We're okay with that?
No.
Okay.
So I think in summary, you, you, you pointed out numbers two and three, you think captured the intent of that opening paragraph.
Yes.
So one, I'll just read it here quick. Creating an annual work plan and consultation, consultation with the mayor, city staff, city council, representatives of the, of the TAB will meet at least annually with the city council or its council infrastructure committee to discuss the annual work plan to it being finalized, prior to being finalized. So that's again, kind of a, a work process thing, but it gets, it sure bounds things, right?
Right.
So then, if, if there's no comment on that, would you, they say go to two to three and three, which is, is following that, which is, two is research and reviewing transportation, transportation-related ordinances and policies for recommendation. And three, providing input into the initiation, initiation and development of major corridor studies and transportation system long-range plans. Comments on those?
Look at example of, let's talk about an example of an ordinance. So I think we have had to use an ordinance to change speed limits.
Sure. Yes. I would say that, that's one that was intended here. Yes, that could be another. Mm-hmm. That, our speed cameras, red light cameras. Any of those, tolling.
Not the ones that I want.
Right.
I just want to understand it better.
So let's, let's talk about the, um, the truck route. That particular ordinance, what path did it take? It, it didn't, did it go to any citizen committees or did it, was it managed completely within the city council?
Uh, that's an excellent question and I can't recollect. I, I was going to say, I think it was only at the, the whole body.
My knowledge.
And maybe the speed limits as well. I seem to recall that as part of going through this committee.
We had at least a presentation, didn't we, with services? We did on the cameras. It may have been touched by services, but mainly at the.
Or certainly.
Yeah.
Subcommittees in the full council. Right. Right.
You're talking to other citizen groups or some.
Right, right.
Okay. None of those thus far.
With the TAB, um, when it exists, then that'll change what we did for speed limits. That'll change what we did for truck routes.
Yes.
Right? It'll add time.
It may. It may.
But it's just, it's a, it's a, it's a thicker level of governance.
Yeah.
It's another level of review. But we're saying, "This is important. This is, it's very important to have this organization formed for this purpose to, like Bill said, maybe using some foresight to get us in front of an issue, but also as part of the deliberation and the formation of, of policy that today is just managed by the council." That's what we're saying with this.
Right. And, and to follow up on that, I would see like maybe it'd be nice to get more of a recommendation from them like that when it came to council, like on speed limits. Because there was some debate on council to where it was 30, 35, a split halfway, and there was, there was some debate back and forth on that, that maybe we would have had some other input on that that could have come with maybe a more, a little more informed decision or not. I don't know. That's, that's, that's a possibility, I'd say.
Yeah, I see the way, for example, you know, planning policy, any of those other commit, the existing commissions or boards, especially the way planning policy come forward, the very forward, very formal. I don't know if it has to be that formal. It's a very formal record and recommendation and justification for whatever they're recommending. And they all do that at varying degrees, but that would be, that would be the type of product I would expect for a given issue.
Go ahead.
Um, so, just a comment. I actually, my memory, I believe one of the driving reasons for this was because the council, when they were doing budget review and other issues last year, recognized that while we said traffic was their number one priority, we actually didn't have a citizen process for the big traffic questions, the transportation questions. And so, I thought with this, I get concerned about saying adding another level of governance because it sounds a little bureaucratic to me. I think this was more or less recognizing that if traffic and transportation is our number one issue, then it needs to have this level of review for the items, not just council touches. That just wasn't enough. So, it's, it's finally, we are getting behind this issue that has been dogging the city for decades. That's why we're doing it. Great. Wait for it to start.
Okay. We get on two and three? We're, we're getting to your five-year show. Let's do four. Reviewing the framework for prioritizing transportation capital improvement projects, which sounds to me like some would, might be needed if we had a TPD.
Yeah, thank. Yeah. So, just for clarity, I think we've talked about this before. It was very intentional to use these words. It wasn't necessarily that the Transportation Advisory Board would prioritize the capital projects because I, I think that's rightly the work of the council. But they'd review the framework that the council might use to prioritize projects or that staff would also use. So, we, we have a framework now. You've seen that. It's still, I'd say, in pilot mode, right? Still tweaking it, learning as we go, trying to make it a useful tool. But we have a list of criteria and we rate projects according to that criteria. That's kind of what was meant by this, is they would look at that and they'd, they'd decide the decision weights for the criteria. They'd say, "Yeah, we need to add a new criteria, criterion because there's this new emerging need in the community, but we need to make sure that we have capital projects to address."
And, and I would hope too, like, with, with the CIP, as we're trying now to get, you know, public input in that, which is kind of hard for a big plan to get public, as much public input, but we're not going to go out and, the way we do in a, in a neighborhood meeting or something of that nature. So, as, as a way to get that input into that CIP, because we have to prioritize those. I mean, it's which one we're going to spend our money on first because obviously, we can't do them all. So, I, I would welcome that citizen input to say, because like we got from the Traffic Task Force, right? What came out of that was the Maple, Trader Joe's was the highest priority.
Sure.
I, I wouldn't have known that was the highest priority, but that told us that was the highest priority. So, we're doing something about that now. So, I, I would hope that there's some interaction of that nature that's helping us get some input that we may not be aware of. And we all see what's happening in the city through our own eyes, but sometimes there's a little more eyes would help on that. So, that's, that.
Sure, sure. Um, the, the, I would add that as we start talking about the biennial nature of our new budgeting processes, Jen Olson, the finance director, has talked about an on-year and the off-year, right? With the on-year being a lot of work to create those cap, capital budgets and capital projects. And then, in the off-year, because our capital priorities don't change that dramatically from one year to the next, we'd use the off-year to update the plan. So, if, if we had just done a strategic plan on parks, for example, then we could take what we learned from that, reorder the projects or add new ones, but not completely redo the whole capital planning effort. And also, during that off-year, we would put more emphasis on public engagement to gather new ideas for year three, incorporation into the, the document potentially, or getting the feedback that would help that subsequent year's prioritization by the council. So, just wanted to say, I'm, I, I don't know what role a Transportation Advisory Board would play in being the facilitator of, of gathering that information, but it is planned as part of our new capital planning process to have that, you know, off-year be an emphasis.
The comments on four? Oh, all right. Paul, so your number five. Updating the transportation impact analysis guidelines as needed. And your question was, what's a TIA?
What are those are? The transportation impact analyses and what the guidelines to talk about?
The TIA guidelines are guidelines that the Development Services Department uses to ensure that developments adequately evaluate and mitigate their impacts. And it's a report that's technically done by the developer's engineer, submitted to the city and reviewed by the city. And so, it also defines the different levels of, you know, how many trips through intersections generate the need for certain levels of analysis and things like that. So, an analogy of this would be like a stormwater impact analysis, except it's for transportation. And the guidelines that we produced are those that we're using today that relate to levels of service, number of trips generated. There's a lot that goes into it.
So, this doesn't mean that the Transportation Advisory Board would review the actual reports, the developments analysis.
Just the guide.
Just the guidelines that, that, which spell out what the city is interested in knowing about traffic impacts.
Makes sense.
Go ahead.
It does. Thank you. So, the makeup proposed here is nine, and how, nine committee members with three alternatives. So, we could, you could have 12 people there. And how many of them, what's, and I guess I can look it in here. There's some number. This is a pretty technical issue. This is not going to be, I wouldn't expect a lot of mastery of this, and most people wouldn't have that. So, we do call specifically, and almost, this, this suggested to me also that it almost like there needs to be a minimum of certain, a number of people with certain amount of transportation engineering or whatever, whatever that.
At least three.
At least three, according to the, have to be.
So, is that, is that, is that adequate? I mean, I mean, it's.
It's probably adequate. There's a lot of things that are embedded in policy that relate back to council's direct policy decisions on level of service and things like that. But then, there is a lot of technical, as you mentioned, that, you know, when you have the expertise and knowledge base, you can generally understand that if you have so many trips that are added to intersections, you know that there's going to be an impact. And so, there's that level of understanding in your staff at Public Works Engineering and DSD. And so, that's used to set up some of these guidelines that set forth the levels of analysis that are done by the developer. And so, in a way, that's making sure that what's being required is consistent with the council's policy to ensure that the policies are held and not degraded. So, that level, while you don't necessarily need the expertise to understand that, you need to be able to understand what the staff are telling you about those numbers.
That work?
Yeah, I don't have a, a different suggestion other than three, but I just, I just want to call out that, that, you know, there, there'll be nine voting members. We may have three, and, and it's pretty broad. Your list above there, you know, talks about transportation disciplines, including planning, engineering, transit, non-motorized, technology, construction, program management. That's pretty broad set of experience, and there's some technical elements to this work. And, and so, it's just a small little yellow flag in my mind is our ability to recruit. And I would love to be proven wrong. Just something I noted in the, in the ask for the committee and then, and then how that is very tied. It's, success of that is going to be very dependent upon the type of people we get onto the committee.
I, I absolutely agree. Open to suggestions on a number of individuals are narrowing their past experience expertise. But the other thing that I would say about this particular duty is, this was an attempt to try to bridge the gap of opinions about what this body should be charged with doing. And there were some comments, as you recall, from the existing volunteer boards that we polled and from community members who had a desire for a volunteer group such as this to have more say on current projects and current impacts. And so, this was a way to, to bridge that gap by allowing the TAB to touch the policies that then shaped the review of the current projects and, and the outcomes of those projects or impacts of those projects. So, still keep them at that policy and planning level, but influence what we get in our current projects.
All right. All right, let's hit six. Making recommendations on transportation programs, services and priorities.
You have the word policies in there though, Emily? Because the comp plan is actually a policy document.
Yeah, I, I, we could. I think, I think it's in two.
Just leave it up in two?
Yeah.
How is this different? Give us an example of programs, services and programs. Programs. A program.
Yeah, yeah. So, Sheldon might throw out a couple of examples. We have really robust programs in Office of Sustainability, for example.
Right. Exactly.
So, Transportation Demand Management, encouraging people to get out of their cars, you know, our all-trips programs. So, from time to time, that group really looks for community input on where to spend its time and energy. And, and we apply for a lot of grants. We've been highly successful in getting those grants, but understanding what the community priorities are in that area would, is always helpful. And so, we thought the TAB could be a good, you know, filter or funnel for that input. And also, because they are looking at our comprehensive plans and other large-scale plans, they could opine as to which services, programs are priorities for us to pursue.
Okay, so, so you would envision this as really being a value-added resource to the Office of Sustainability?
Correct.
Sheldon, do you do programs?
The programs that we would do, and this committee, this board could help us on, is, you know, when we do updates to like crossing guidelines, you know, when pedestrian crossing enhancements and things like that, those pedestrian crossing guidelines, when we update those, traffic calming program development and implementation, input on the basic program and, you know, how to set that up, making sure it's set up the way the community wants it. So, those types of programs, this would be a good help for us to have the board.
Okay. We good on six?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Seven and eight, kind of get back into this stuff, but seven is presenting to the city council an annual report of the work plan activities and accomplishments. So, that's just basically reporting back. And the last one is other duties is assigned.
Right.
If we, if we, if we decide we need them to do something else?
They do.
Doesn't everybody have that in their job description? Other duties is assigned.
It's like a job description.
So, I think those are good to have in there because some project may come up that we want them to focus on one way or another, and then we could get them to focus on a mobility plan or a whatever, right?
Correct.
Okay? So, with all that in mind, it sounded to me like everybody's good with this ordinance as written.
Yep.
So, the next question to me comes as, we kind of severed, because I'm looking at severability, so I'm using the word sever. We severed from this conversation earlier, what it would take to actually implement this. And the city is talking about staff. So, they're looking at, you know, actual employees to do that. So, I think you're at the point of recommending one FTE to implement this board. And, and hold on on that, but what I want to do is take the discussion next to, "Okay, we want them to do this," and the city says, "There's a cost to that and how much that is and what that really means." So, I want to get into the next phase of, of this discussion. So, with that, you're up, Emily.
Sure. So, over, over the months that we have been discussing this, I have said that right now, we, we don't have the staff capacity to adequately support this board. This would be, I hope, a, a good work program that we would establish for the board. One of the primary tasks we've talked about is the Mobility Master Plan, and we don't yet have funding for that plan either, but there would be a lot of project management duties that I would foresee falling to a staff member. And certainly, there's the care and feeding of a board and keeping it working efficiently and preparing agenda materials and directing consultants that might be working on tasks of the board's direction. So, in prior presentations, I've talked about what that looks like in other cities and have used that to inform what we think we might need. So, in other cities, we've seen that a transportation planner usually is the liaison, the staff liaison to a board like this. And the individuals that I talked to had said that at any given time, their liaison duties have, would constitute 15 to 40% of their time. That ebb and flows with whatever projects they're working on. It ebb and flows with the personalities on the board, with how many new members you have versus seasoned members. And so, they, they roughly said on average, we think it's about 25% of our time. So, that's not a full FTE, but when you look at the work plan and you think about pulling together a mobility master plan or some of these other projects that we have described today, you begin to see, "Okay, there's more than just helping the board work through policies and, and projects. There's the actual work of developing those programs and policies and projects." And for that reason, we think a full-time transportation planner would be needed to carry out the work of this board and also support how it functions. So, that's our recommendation would be a, a transportation planner. We've done some work to look at comparisons from other communities, and it, there's, it's a range, you know, it's associate planner in some places, but more often a senior planner. Some cases, a transportation manager. I'm kind of comfortable with that senior transportation planner level, looking at various job descriptions from other communities and, and their essential duties. And in addition to that, I've also spoken about the need for clerical help. We reduced our clerical staff several years ago, and we have needs across the board in variety of departments. Boards and commissions always require some support from administrative help, and our support services staff has limited capacity right now, I think, to support this board and the projects of the board. I think there's an increment beyond just, you know, preparing agendas for the board and maintaining contact with board members. So, there's some increment there. I think it's a little flexible. When I, I'm going to just put a finger up in the wind and try to figure out what that might be. I, I think it's, it's less than a quarter FTE. But as I said, we have other administrative assistant needs in the organization too. So, one question is, should we, can you hire a point two? Or does that become too challenging and, and then do we want to hire a full-time person that could serve? For example, our HR department does not have any administrative assistant support right now, and they're, so therefore, we're using our HR director and our analysts to do a lot of that work. That's not appropriate and not cost-effective in my mind. So, there's a question there is, you know, what, how do we want to fill the administrative services needs in the city? If I just take like a point two kind of calculation for a support services person and a 1.0 senior planner collectively, I think with salary and benefits, we're looking at in the ballpark of like $160,000, if that helps you to understand. And again, that's just a, a real part-time support services.
I'm not surprised that that is the resourcing plan for this, because I think this is taking us in a much better and much more thorough direction in terms of transportation planning than what we've had. And so I, the Denver positions, the types of positions you said, have not surprised me. So I'm actually in, you know, one of the really strong supporters of this going this direction, and I support the staffing plan that you laid out, but I still need to see it in the context of what we might expect overall in the city in terms of added or deleted positions. So for me, these are high, high priority. But how does it fit in with the other additions and deletions you have?
Yeah. And and just a quick note on that, we we are, right now, in the process of developing our 2018 budget, very, very early stages of that. We've just submitted staffing requests that the finance department is costing out. And we've, we're whittling down the number of positions that the mayor's office will propose in that in that budget. There are other staffing requests that will be made.
Well, I think it's in the context of the, I can't remember what packet is in, but there is a mid-year request coming
Correct.
to fund positions
Correct.
for 2017 that the council held over. And I know you haven't finished the staffing adjustments you might have for 2018, but something in there that gives a general overview generally of where you're expecting to add resources in 2018 would, I think, help with the funding decision for 2017. So maybe having that information generally discussed when we get the 2017 request would be good.
Sure.
Paul? So I agree with with your comments there to see this as overall, as a whole. I heard you say basically about 25% of a transportation planner, but that's a went to a full position plus 0.2 of clerical support. So I know we're doing fractions in math and not humans, and they're humans, but that's less than half if you add those two up. So but we got, you know, 1.2.
But that was just for sort of the the committee support, but not that actual doing of the work of the committee. Somebody has to do that work, too.
So when you, and and I know there's work to be done. I'd like to dive a lot deeper into this, because when you talk about that $160,000 a year, then, and that's, that's long-term commitment, that's forever. And and I want that money to go to projects. So I would get very concerned about that cost. And and basically, but it's good. You put a price tag on on what you want to do, and then you say, is it worth it or not? And but I'm concerned about the cost at that at that level. So if that's, it's all this, you have anything to say on cost or F T E or whatever?
Well, I do. I do. If
Why don't you do?
At that at that full level that Emily just laid out, potentially a full-time transportation planner at some level, associate or senior, and a quarter F T E for clerical, I think you said 160,000, I think that sounded low. It's not based on any science, but I know how difficult the marketplace is right now.
You know, I'll give you a
And fully burdened, until you're, you were also talking fully burdened costs.
Yeah, I'll give you sort of quick math, based on our salary ranges currently, that senior planner might be at about 100 K. And then you add 40% as a conservative benefits factor on top of that.
That's the fully burdened.
And then you look at the support services position at a 0.2, and add, the the factor that I don't know, that I roughly computed, is what's the kind of prorated benefits on that, that size of a part-time position. And that's how I got to the 160. It's about 20 20 K for the support services position. And that that may be where it's perhaps a little low. But I think the senior planner number of 140 is fairly accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Ben?
So one of the reasons, Bill, that I ask for it in the context of not only the four positions for this year, but sort of a general lay of the land for next year, is because I think we have to decide, you know, where we think the resources should be. And I would consider holding off doing some of the other hiring that we had in the budget over a transportation manager. So I'm not sure that saying yes to this or saying this is my most important means that everything else gets through, too. I would look for a balance of, do we really want to put our energies here and here or in just one place? So for me, there's a, there's a lot of things to go through to decide which positions you're going to raid or fill.
And and I agree, I can't look at the position by itself.
Itself.
You have to look at the whole. So the question I have that gets me to, you know, because I think, I think we're all in accordance with with how this is laid out. But the question is, they're saying there's a price tag on it. I don't think with that, any of us are ready to make a decision or recommendation.
Not on the price tag.
Right?
No, just on this.
Right. So the question is next steps, because, you know, if we send this to council as is, they need to know that, oh, you had to do work, that looks good. If they don't understand that the price tag that that will come to it to actually implement that, then we're feeding them bad information. So I'm thinking how to go forward, because I wouldn't, I don't want to go forward with any position consideration until we do like the whole thing for like 2018, or even, you know, part of this to that point in time. So, you know, what, I'm just thinking of the steps we could, we could say, we've got this figured out. This is what we'd like to have done. There's costs to it. We haven't dealt with that yet. Do we want to approve this for now, hold, and then say later on, when we get into budgeting, we're going to look at all the positions and this and that, whatever. And this will be the one or many, or whatever there are, and say, then we'll have to decide. And then we're going to see all these costs and say, okay, this is more important than that one because we can't afford them all.
Okay.
I'm going to say, Paul first.
I agree, Bill. And I think it is a good idea for the full council to have a good and deep and complete understanding of what we're proposing for the T I B, for the T A B, so that come budget time, for 2018 budget time, when there is an F T E component tied to this, then we don't have to go into what it's for. We will already have pretty, the council will have a good understanding, at least for that component. So I think you can break these up. My recommendation would be to add the the staffing as part of the 2018. But I mean, that's, that's just my first reaction, if you have a, if you have a different preference. But that makes sense to me.
Ben?
So I would say what might be really helpful for the four council members that aren't here, is that in your report out about this agenda bill, and that the committee supported it, you could also say that it is absent of a resource plan that's not included in here, and that when council considers resourcing during budget deliberations, and also during this midterm review for the 2017 positions, if we do not commit to a resource plan of new staff, then our current administration will come back and tell us, well, we can only do this if we don't fill this position or don't do that. They'll come back and tell us what they can do. So I think letting the council know there's a resource plan that's not included is a great idea. But if we approve this, and then we tell them they get no new bodies, they're just going to come back and say, well, okay, then there's nobody supporting this unless you don't fill this position or do that. So they'll, they'll figure it out. But it's good to give a heads up to council that this, this comes with resources, just not in this agenda bill. I think they would appreciate that.
So
I might add that I'd be happy to also put in the update section on the A B.
That would be great.
This little piece that we have talked about, highlighting that there are two positions that we've discussed and to the tune of.
And and I'd like to say that we'd put them into the 2018 budget, not try to fit anything into 17. What's that?
The mix.
The mix, yeah. It's into the 18. Don't try to sneak anything here and quickly into 17. It's already happened. The ones you're proposing are already online. It's, it's too late, I think, to try to sneak them in there. So
I'll be dissenting that. I don't agree. I don't agree that the that four positions that are currently listed to be proposed to be funded in 2017 are more significant to me than this position. So I'm not sure that we'd be rushing into anything if we were to look at what was proposed in the 2017 and unfunded, and now we have this position. I'm not sure why this one couldn't be funded this year. I think, so either way, I think we got choices.
And and I think one of the reasons for that is those ones that are coming back to us now are coming back to us from really 2016, when we told them, no, then, and they'll come back midway through in 17, and we'll take another look. This was not even a, you know, sparkle and twinkle in somebody's eye at that time. So I don't want to mix that up either. So that's why I would push it off till 18. So you don't want to push it off?
Yeah, I don't. I think this is our biggest priority.
Paul?
Well, I agree with what was said earlier, that it is difficult to look at staffing incrementally and one-off. The time when we see the entire proposal is at the time of the budget. And and there is always some level of additional staffing requests. And there's, and it happens different ways. So the, again, I just, you know, I said that earlier, because I think that's the best context in which to make that decision, because it does allow us, you know, to make it in total, right, in in context of all. And so the, they want the bill that's already existing coming forward to services for the additional positions, I think we may have to, you know, keep this, keep, if we know that this question is going to come to us, I guess we could accelerate it, but, or we could consider those questions, knowing that this is coming to us.
I didn't quite get what you're saying there. So you, you want to accelerate it or you don't?
Oh, he didn't say either way.
No, what I said is, is that, is that justification, I think the council, Bill, you said it pretty good, the council's going to have a good idea for the purposes and the needs for the other ones, because we discussed it last year. They don't know this yet.
Right.
So we have to go through this process of of the T A B and getting that. And it may not be difficult, right, for the rest of the council to get on board. At that time, if we stay on track with the consideration for the additional resources in 2017 still, I'll at least, I know I'll be able to look at those requests and know that this is something additional that's coming either very, very soon, or in the next year's budget. That's what I meant.
Okay, so I'm going to take a little leeway here, that is, you're kind of got a little middle ground there. You're a, right away, you're a little middle ground, and I say 18. So I'm going to roll it into 18 and say that there's different opinions on on that, on how fast this needs to happen, if you're okay with that presentation of it.
I don't know if that really reflects it. It's not that I am saying that this is the most important position we have to fill whenever. I'm just saying that I don't, I believe there's two opportunities to decide this. One is in, we have budget for four staffing positions, included in a budget for this year, and we're going to get asked to fill those four positions. We have finally gotten through a very big step, which is forming what I think will be a critical and crucial new thing to start to address what we keep saying is our number one priority. To say that it's our number one priority, but we can't talk about funding it till 2018, doesn't make it our number one priority. So I think we should talk about it twice, when we're talking about the 2017 positions that we could approve and in the budget as well. I want the council to be able to say what their biggest priority is.
All right. Let me ask one more technical question. So the stuff that's coming to us, I mean, you've already got all the work done on that, right? I mean, I mean, you gave us dollars on this off the top of your head, just with your general knowledge. So
Well, I want to give credit to H R. H R did a market analysis for me, grabbed job descriptions and everything.
You didn't do this?
Yeah, so it wasn't out of thin air.
Right.
But yes.
Yeah, it's all
Yeah, I have everything I need, and I can update the A B, and it suggested it might return on August 7, and I'm able to do that if that's your desire.
Wait, I don't know if I heard yet. So I didn't finish asking the question, and you answered something, so I'm not sure we're on the same page.
Okay.
So the question was technically getting this attached to the other one, which is coming on the 7th, right?
Oh, I'm not saying attached to.
Okay. That's what I'm, that's what I'm concerned with, it coming together. So I don't want it to, us to have four positions now, and by the time you put things together, you know, you know, what it takes, then a month later, you know, in September, then it comes one by itself. I don't want to do that under any circumstance. So
So I guess your opt, options are, perhaps, I heard a recommendation that I just verbalize, be ready to talk about thus far, be it at a very early stage of our 2018 development, I could explain what positions have made the first cut. We are not at final cut. We still have work to do to analyze revenues and look at other operating costs. But I can tell you who's still in the mix for 18. It's going to be probably a longer list than what you will ultimately see in our proposed budget to you. But I can share that. I can share that verbally. I'm more comfortable doing that than putting it in writing at this, this point in this A B for those reasons. So that's one. Or, and I could do that for August 7, or we could hold the A B until the proposed budget, the mayor's proposed budget advances to council, and at the same time, we could bring this forward.
And that's coming in, actually, in a few months. I mean, a few months.
Yeah.
So it's not far off.
In October.
Yeah. So we're, and we're August, September. We're just a couple of months away here. So that's, that's what I'm saying. We're, I mean, we're really close to that falling into to the budget very closely.
So my suggestion is exactly what Emily said. I want to have like a very, a verbal explanation of how this particular piece of resourcing plan for this item fits in with the bigger picture, possible bigger picture for 2018. I think the part, Bill, where we're not connecting is that we're going to make some staffing decisions in a different A B, not in this A B. I think this A B should go through, get this transportation board through on the 7th, get the council to talk about moving on. How we staff it, we have two opportunities for that. And that is where I want the council to be aware that there's a 2018 staffing plan coming and a 2017 proposal that we're going to see very soon. You can, if you approve this, you have two different ways to decide to fund it now or in 2018. So I'm not proposing new A Bs. I'm not proposing adding A Bs. Verbal conversation, that's all I'm asking for. That's what Emily said.
So with that verbal conversation, I'm going to propose that it rolls into 18. But the council at that time can say, hey, move it up, see if you can do that. But do you remember the date that those are coming to us now? I don't have, off the top of my head, I can't think. Those four positions?
Uh
It's real quick. It's not the 7th?
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember.
Didn't we just refer to services?
It goes to services first, so, which probably means not until their August meeting. And since we don't have a second council meeting, it's probably the first meeting in September when it comes back.
All right.
So I'm confused when you say recommend, is that in the actual motion now? Does it say?
The motion just announced is, you know, return to full council.
So how are you recommending, you're changing the motion to say not to staff until 2018?
No. Here's, here's what I propose, is we're going to have the ordinance
Yeah.
recommend to pass, you know, to the council for approval. And then we'll talk about it would, to really make this happen, would come with a need of bodies.
Yeah.
And at that time, Emily can do a little review of some things that are coming, plus what this is approximately, the 160,000, et cetera, et cetera. She can do that with the bigger picture, so they have that in the background. And then the A B is just to approve
Commitment.
the ordinance, the committee. And then if council sees that they want to take some action sooner than that, they can, at that time, they can do anything they want.
Okay, that makes sense. Yep. I didn't understand where your recommendation to fund it in 2018 was going to show up.
Well, yeah. So that's just
So it'll show up in council as a comment from you, saying you think it should be 2018. That makes sense.
Yeah. So that's, that's the plan that's going to roll into that new budget that's coming to us shortly. And if there's a need to do something sooner, then also can take another movement.
Might have an opportunity. Okay, that totally makes sense.
Does that make sense? You okay with that, Paul?
Yep.
All right. So, all right. So, you know, we're moving this to council, and it on the 7th. We're, we're good for that, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We are completed the Transportation Advisory Board, except for public comment. Is there any public comment on the Transportation Advisory Board, please?
Good evening. Kristy Tripulon with Raleigh Properties at 1595 Northwest Gilman Boulevard. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I've been watching this, and I can see a lot of thoughtfulness that's been put into this. And I absolutely understand the need and support for council. So I think this is a good thing. I would absolutely agree it needs to be staffed, because it's a very complex endeavor. And there's a long ways to go in terms of support for transportation and opportunities for the future. I do have a concern with the makeup. I think I think that you need more subject matter experts than just three. I think you, especially since it's going to be a voting body, given the complexity of the topic, all the individual nuances that come with transportation planning, and the regional nature of some of the impact that we see as a community as well. I think it's really important, because it's very easy to get wrapped up in sharing opinions about transportation, as opposed to really looking into the facts. And I think that there's also different philosophies around transportation, so you've got to have a real balanced group. I also think that, just by way of experience, given we're a little bit of a smaller town, I think it is going to be a challenge to find some subject matter experts. Back when I joined the chamber, when I first came to Issaquah, there used to be its own transportation committee, but that went away, because there was only one or two people that could actually speak to transportation, and it ended up being a lot of opinions, and then it got folded into the governmental affairs, and then ultimately, it kind of went away, because it's a hard topic, and the chamber said, the city's working hard on this, so, you know, leave the planning to them. So I think it's important to have subject matter experts more than three, and I think also, given the fact that you're really well-working council now, together you work as a team, but the council will change over the years, and so you've got to have a stable body that's going to be able to help support the council and to help work through future issues and planning efforts. So that's all I have to share. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Kristy. David, no? All right, I think, okay. This is taken care of. To our Item C on the agenda.
Actually, can I ask a question then? Does the ordinance say three or?
It says at least three.
There we go.
At least three.
Awesome, because that's the way the Development Commission used to be set up as well.
It's at least three, so we can have more.
Excellent.
But like you say, hard to get them sometimes, you may not. And some of those transportation expertise might be bicyclists, too. So, all right, good? Okay, Item C, Sheldon, you're up with project updates, and you're going to just enlighten us on everything that's going on right now, because there's just things happening everywhere. Matter of fact, even it might be.
So, the update list that you received pretty much gives you a good picture of where a lot of the projects are, what's been, what is happening, and what is going to happen in the near future. Just a couple of things I want to highlight. The Southeast 62nd Street project, today, the first truckload of pipe piles for the Bridge Foundation was delivered. So there's going to be trucks moving into town with pipe piles over the coming weeks, because they're basically using one truck a day to bring them in, and then, and there's only two piles on each truck, so, large diameter pipe piles. They expect to start driving those piles in a couple of weeks. Yes?
So a question about that. How do we, what's the neighborhood notification look like, and does this also have an impact on Costco, or just on the other side of the creek? How do we handle all that?
They're actually coming in outside of peak hour, and like the one that came in today was before 7:00 AM.
Oh, not the deliveries, I mean the actual pile driving.
The pile driving. The communication out into the public, we're already working with Autumn on that. The piles will actually be vibrated into place, and then the last couple of feet or so, just to make sure that they have the right capacity, they'll drive them with a hammer. It will, you know, the driving will be noisy, but we're going to notify the public of what's going on, especially the residential area just to the north. So that one, that's the pile foundations. They're also having sheet piles delivered in a week or so, and then they'll drive those, vibrate them into place right there at the east roundabout at 221st, and then they'll start the massive hauling for the fill material there, so that we can create a grade-separated crossing for the bed trail. So a lot of work happening in that corner of the world. Let's see, what else was?
The next one, Fish Passages.
The Fish Passage Project, the culverts, the work went off without a hitch. Contractor finished early with that part of the project. There's still more work to be done. There's still a pedestrian detour through that project and around that project, which we've been working with WashDOT on improving the detour markings and things like that.
I was going to ask you about that.
WashDOT added some delineations along First Avenue, 229th, and the like, to make it clear where the pedestrian is supposed to be, and used like little plastic bollards along the way to separate the two from the traffic.
It was confusing.
So we've been working continuously with WashDOT on those confusion points, but we got that done yesterday and today. So there's improvements out there for the pedestrian. Trying to think, we're still working on the Issaquah-Hobart Road Study. The consultants have done a number of interviews.
Is that one on there?
I believe it is.
Yeah, down the bottom.
Yeah, I mean, we've completed the data collection and things like that, right? And the consultant has been interviewing stakeholders at the county, locally, community people down south, as well as in town here. They're still synthesizing all the data to come up with some recommendations on what they think would be a good thing to happen.
What timing do you expect?
I don't have that. We asked that of the consultant earlier this week to give us a schedule, an updated schedule on their work, and they haven't provided it to us yet. But we're trying to get that information from them. The staff held last week a traffic calming meeting up in Issaquah Highlands. It's not on this sheet. It was well-attended by 50-plus citizens. We received a lot of good feedback and comment. The administration actually just met today to discuss the comments and to start to think about, you know, what can the city do in partnership with the community? And so we're still in the process of distilling all the data, and then we plan to get back to Issaquah Highlands Council next week sometime and, you know, continue the discussion. As stated at the meeting, that was the beginning of the discussion. And then to put a plug in for a meeting coming up on Monday night, the 24th, there's a Newport Way meeting for, to answer questions about development along the Newport Way corridor between 54th and SR 900, and that meeting's going to be held at the Tibbetts Manor.
I had a question on a letter from the public. A resident on Newport Way sent in some sketches and comments on functionality of a proposed roundabout, and did her own little analysis of what, which roundabout made access at different points difficult. Is that the kind of thing that will get discussed at the Monday meeting?
The Monday meeting is more of an informational meeting. They answer their questions from the previous time, although there will be information about the roundabout proposal. But it's information that is being pushed out as, you know, because it's a technical issue at this point.
So that letter that she wrote with comments, how does that get addressed?
Sheldon, can I jump in for a second? So we made contact with the resident. We offered to meet with her to talk through her comments. She declined face-to-face. Then we tried to ask if she would rather speak by phone. I didn't hear back as to whether she wanted to do that. She did state that she was intending to come on Monday night. She had missed the previous meetings, and that's unfortunate, because there were things in that email correspondence that did get answered during those meetings, and things that she has brought up that have subsequently been addressed. She was at one of those smaller neighborhood HOA meetings where we showed a couple roundabout alternatives, and that's what she's commenting on in those design pictures, and there have been modifications even since then. So she'll get a status update if she comes to the meeting, and we will be showing the design that we think we're landing on, based on all the input from the community meetings, but even more so from talking to those immediate budding neighborhoods. So it'll be a great opportunity to kind of say, this is how we've incorporated feedback and worked to balance all the priorities.
So there's a lot more feedback that came in than just the letter that was sent to council?
Well, I'm referring to the feedback that we got during the two community meetings, and we've had a number of smaller meetings with just those HOAs.
So I guess in my head, what I'm processing is that it's a development project, not a city project.
Correct.
It happened, the public meeting for that happened at a Development Commission meeting. Subsequent to that, it's not going to be a light or whatever it was going to be, but somebody is still sending in comments, and I'm just trying to put it together in my head.
Yeah.
If they don't come to the meeting, that's one thing, but if they do come to the meeting on Monday, I think there'd be an expectation that whatever she brought up in her letter, that that's the opportunity that it would get discussed.
Sure, and that's the intent. We'll try to, it'll be a little hard not to repeat all the information that she missed from the first two meetings, but I think we will address her comments.
Okay, perfect.
Her comments have been stimulated by the fact that we did go out with a developer to those HOAs and showed them those alternatives, and then we asked the HOA president to send out those designs to anyone who missed those small meetings and circulate them to get some comments.
And that's probably how she got it.
That's what generated it for her. I'm not even sure if she was at the HOA meeting.
Okay.
So we're going to try to get her informed, but also make sure everybody knows where we're at.
That sounds good, thanks.
And what construction is going to start up here probably in the next month or two?
We have some crossings on Front Street, probably towards mid to late August will start up. Again, the crossings, one of the reasons why we didn't get the bids earlier on is because the contractors were too busy, and so they won't get started until late August on that. We should be opening bids on the 25th, next Tuesday, for the Trader Joe's Maple Intersection, which that will be on council's agenda for August 7th for consideration to award the bid. And it's a one-touch item, as the memo stated that went in front of council. I don't have any others unless you have specific questions about projects.
Just those ones that are all starting here in early fall, August, the other ones is Front Street, Sunset, Second, Juniper Sidewalk, those are all going to.
Yes.
Be starting here shortly, so people.
Late August, September.
Can see in that area on the Second Avenue at Rainier, Sunset at City Hall, and Juniper at 7th.
Right.
And we'll also, we'll be starting some construction, and hopefully Trader Joe's, but we don't know that yet, because the bid hasn't opened.
Correct, and it hadn't been awarded.
Right.
Questions?
Yep.
No, can you go to the water projects, Emily?
Sure.
Thanks. There was a comment under the SPAR one that says we're still negotiating with WashDOT on that piece of property. Is that just an old comment? Negotiate with WashDOT for property purchase?
That's.
We're still negotiating.
We're still working with WashDOT on that. WashDOT has finally ordered the appraisal. We've been trying to get through some other hoops with WashDOT and FHWA, and we completed the environmental assessment that they requested, gave that to them. It's a process.
So the reason I was wondering about it is because we got that request at council to talk about pre-annexation zoning on the King County parcel.
Yes.
But the WashDOT parcels are in different places?
The three parcels are in the southerly, southeasterly portion of the annexation area.
Is it, oh, so they are part of the annexation?
They are part of the annexation area.
They are owned by WashDOT.
They are owned, they are real property owned by WashDOT. And the negotiations thus far with WashDOT have been that the city purchasing the three properties, there's a certain area that the city needs, and WashDOT's going to hold back a deed restriction on the rest to maintain open space on the rest of those three parcels.
That makes sense. And it may be a meeting I missed, but what the heck is Dudley Smiles?
That is a development project on 221st, where they were working in the roadway doing sewer and water work.
Okay. There was some water work on Second Avenue as well, but I didn't see the project list here. Was that like a water main break instead of a water main project?
On Second Avenue Northwest, or?
Second Avenue Northwest.
Northeast.
Second Avenue Northeast.
I'd have to look into it.
I'm just going to assume it's.
I'd have to look into it.
No, it wasn't the capital.
Yeah.
And then on the sewer projects, the L rig doesn't have any dates on it, and it talked about not being able to find contractors. Is there a time sensitivity to that? Do we commit to doing something by certain dates, or not?
No, the L rig mitigations, we have another seven years to get them completed.
Oh, there you go, okay.
And just because of support loads, change of staff, and trying to bring on a consultant to get the designs done, it's taken a little bit longer than anticipated.
That makes sense. Seven years sounds like enough time to get it done.
Yeah, there's plenty of time there.
On the Newport Way project, 900 to 54th, so we're talking right now about a design, I think it was. Timing for a design, but not a timing for construct. The question I had was, when we have all the little bits and pieces in between happening with private development, how does the coordination and timing between what we do and what they do come together? Like, when does that, when do those conversations start? If you're following what I'm saying.
We've already begun those. So PWE has been having conversations with DSD, tracking what's happening from development-related improvements, and as the actual designs by the developer get done, we're taking those in AutoCAD format, so that we can incorporate them and drop them into ours, and so we can start to coordinate.
That's not quite my question. My question is more, when we had a missing piece of sidewalk on Newport a few years ago, and missing connection, but we had a builder doing sidewalk, we coordinated the design with their work and used their contractor to build that piece. So what I mean is if there's contractors on the ground doing road improvements for developers, is there an opportunity for us to leverage a contract that they already have to get a better price to complete a piece that we want to do with their contractor? Does that kind of conversation happen?
That was able to happen because of the small scale aspect of it.
Yeah, it was very small scale, yes.
When you talk about Newport, 54th to 900, we've got to go out for public bids on our portion of it. It's way too large. We would be in trouble with a lot of people if we.
Totally makes sense, the dollar value.
Yeah.
Although I'll add that while we may not be getting the construction, because the scope is much, much bigger, to some degree, we are getting some of the design work completed by contractors for segments that aren't purely their projects' frontage, and largely because we're working on this corridor project, and we want to make sure that all that design is consistent with the corridor.
That's great. That is, that's just an awesome way to do it. Question on the traffic calming program, or traffic calming outreach in the Old Town area, is it's on here, and I can't remember what state it's at, but I'm not hearing much resident buzz about it. I'm just wondering where it is in the public process. I'm meeting a lot of people who don't know it's coming, and so I'm wondering where we are. I can't remember what the comment was here, it was kind of general.
I believe Kurt has said to me that they're planning that for.
Oh, it's coming.
As, it's coming. It hasn't occurred yet.
That totally makes sense. The 43rd Roundabout Solution has been done. I think I don't understand that, that project, very well either.
Okay, so what we did was, as part of the crossing study.
Is that the slip lane thingy, or no?
Yeah, as part of the crossing study, there was a study that was identified that needed Kurt to evaluate the roundabout for pedestrian, bicycles, and address the slip lane issues, or define what they are, and what are some potential solutions. We have received that report, staff has reviewed it, and we did receive a public comment recently about that, and we're actually preparing a response to the citizen regarding that, and it looks like there's going to, we're going to have to generate another capital improvement project for inclusion into the next update of the capital improvement plan to deal with that work.
And I guess that's interesting. I've had somebody ask me what's going to happen there. How would the public be able to access the, I think it's called the solution, the roundabout solution? How could they see that document?
The report, the report's not online right now, because literally, we were just reviewing it over the past couple of weeks.
So will it end up online somewhere, so that the people who live in the condominiums right there, or who come down?
We can put it online, once it's.
How would they? How would they find it, I guess? I'm trying to figure that.
I'd have to see how Adam's going to put it on the web.
It would be helpful to know how that ends up so that people asking who are coming down from Providence Point or coming out of that condo can actually look at what the proposed solution might be.
Yeah, there's no graphic that I'm aware of for it. It's identifying what the issues are and what you can do about it.
Yeah.
I haven't personally seen the report, so I'm not sure. There's a graphic illustrating what the changes would be, just what I know I've seen in text from staff, what the report was saying.
So, I guess before it ends up in the capital improvement plan, I think there ought to be something that the public can see, especially the public that lives in that area, to comment on whether they love it or hate it or think it'll work or not work, not just that it shows up in the capital improvement plan. So, whatever that works out at.
So, we've had contact with at least one neighbor. That's a person that we could share the study with. We may also have a HOA or similar contact that we could reach out to and find a way to distribute it. I'm somewhat reluctant just to send a technical study out or post it on the website. It's very hard, especially without a visual. And because we have not yet done design, design is, when you actually have something for people to look at and can explain it, that's, it works a little better. So, we're not there yet in our planning effort. However, we can, it's a public document. Once it's out of draft and into final, right? So, we can share it. But I think it might be better for us to think about going out to that neighborhood and saying, "We've completed the study. Here's what it said. Here are the next steps," which include putting it into the CIP, phasing in a stage for design and then a stage for construction, and reminding everybody that those have to be funded before they can be completed, right? So, I think that that direct person-to-person is usually better.
There is some concern in that area that the slip lane is dangerous.
Yeah, we heard that during the crossing study and that's what initiated this work. Yep.
Okay. Providence Point signalization. So, up here, it still says, "No activity, no activity, future agenda bill." Is this something you're thinking we'll have a funding proposal before the 2018 budget CIP stuff?
I think through the CIP discussion, we were anticipating that council would talk about this project specifically and provide some direction on what year and what funding source, for example, you might like to pursue. And then, when those conversations have wrapped up and council has given us guidance, then we would incorporate it into an agenda bill.
And then, this one on the I-90 Front Street IGR is really more for the chair. And it came up a few weeks ago, or months ago, I don't know.
You say IJR?
The Interchange Justification Report, which is, I don't know where that is on there, maybe at the bottom, is we were having a conversation about that when we were talking about the regional agenda. And I would make a request to you that I still don't understand what this is. I don't understand exactly what it's trying to accomplish, how it would impact. I don't know what the goals of it are. And I would request that maybe we could have it as an agenda item, as just a discussion item for a future meeting, because it's pretty unclear to me what this, what is, what we're trying to do here. I mean, we've heard verbally, it might be this or that. I'd rather have a more robust thing. So, just something for you to think about.
If I could on that one. I've had conversations with WashDOT. And once they bring on the consultant as part of this study, one of the requests that I made of WashDOT was that they actually come out and give a presentation to the full council about what the IJR is, what it does, what it doesn't do. And so, it's, you should have at least one presentation at the beginning of the project and then a subsequent presentation later on in the project. So, I wanted to make sure that the council was kept informed on those very issues.
That's great. There's under developments, Clark Elementary. First Avenue and Bush improvements made in July, were in July. Does that mean that's done? Haven't driven over there at all. It's not done?
I'd have to check in with DSD on that. Those are private development projects.
I think they did do it. Looks like they did.
I think so, yeah.
I think they're done.
And the REVA construction is expected to start in August? What's that?
REVA is the
I know what REVA, I mean, what is the, what's happening on Newport Way? What is it?
Well, we have Anti-Aircraft Creek, which is a separate project listed up here. And then, the REVA development is wanting to start in August so that they can start doing grading operations and get their stormwater vaults in. That's on site.
Okay, I figured because it was showing up here, it was actually the road. Whatever they're improving to Newport Way, no, that's not coming. Okay. I think that's it. Thanks.
All right. Any questions, Paul?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, your turn.
Let me, let me go through this here. You addressed many I've been, I was taking notes as you were talking, Sheldon. So, let me go through all of my notes as well to make sure I've got everything. There was a couple. You answered about the, thank you for the comment about the Providence Point intersection that you were looking for the council to have a conversation during the CIP process. The I-90 Shoulder Use Study Project during the WashDOT open house, a conversation with, I think the woman's name was Kathy, she was the program manager from WashDOT.
That'd be Kathy George, yes.
Kathy George, yeah. She said something, she said her own assessment or maybe that of her team was that maybe doing something there at the pinch point was feasible, viable, or some word like that, and that it was really now was going to go to or somehow be taken to the feds to, for consideration. So, do you, do you have any new information about that?
I don't have any new information on that. I know that WashDOT has had their technical consultant reviewing the possibility of providing the right-of-way and what could be done to help that pinch point issue. And it is technically feasible. The last I understood was they were still trying to dial in what the additional costs are associated with doing that, as well as they need to, still, WashDOT needs to approach FHWA on that because it is limited access right-of-way use for something different than limited access. And so, I've offered city support and help wherever I can in that process. And I have not been contacted in the past few weeks from WashDOT on that. So, I don't know exactly where they are on that. Sure.
Anything else, Paul?
Yeah, hold on, please. You noticed in the under developments, Gilman Lofts isn't listed. There will be a transportation component to that, that intersection.
They're currently under design for it. For those, that signalization that the council approved under the development agreement.
Okay, maybe that can be added to the list.
Yes.
I think that covers everything that you have. About the Hobart Road study. Oh, the Maple Street Northwest and Target, the roundabout. The comment says, "Construction to begin mid to late September." I recall the goal for that project, was it to be complete in the October timeframe? So, does this timing, is this, are we pushing up any window or is this put at risk? The goal?
The window that we're pushing up against is getting it completed before November 1st, which is the holiday season for shopping.
So, November 1st is the date?
Yeah. Everybody wants us done and out of there by November 1 because of the holiday shopping. The timeframe for which the contractor gets started and everything is pretty much based upon council action need August 7. I think Breanna outlined it pretty well in her memo. And then, the time it takes to execute contracts, mobilize the contractor and do all of that. Yeah, we're pushing a very tight window. Thank you. I'll pass that on to her.
Anything else, Paul?
All right, so that, that, okay, I'll have to review that. But that is still doable, the status.
It's extremely close.
I could tell by your reaction. No, thank you. That addresses all my questions. Thank you. Thanks for the update.
Great. I just have one more comment. I said it at council and I'll just say it again since this is up again. And I was actually watching at Trader Joe's Maple there, the trucks coming out of Trader Joe's. We really need to address that they cannot use that as an exit once we put that roundabout in because I watched them come out of there. And they, they inch their way through, you know, waiting to find a gap and they just block the intersection and they're going to be driving, you know, totally over all that stuff. It's just not safe in that manner. So, I think as a safety standpoint, we need to address that now and start that discussion when they're saying that those trucks just can't exit that way. It's just, it's not
Even today, before they, before we do anything there, yes.
Yeah, you start that, so we stop it now so that then construction will, you know, stop it and then they'll go right back. So, I think we need to do that because the safety on that and people trying to get across the street and that big rig just using every inch of the roadway through there is just ridiculous.
So, Economic Development has shared that message previously and is continuing to do so. And you're absolutely right in pointing out that there's going to be a period of time when that intersection is closed. No one will be using it. And certainly, Trader Joe's trucks will need to find a different way to access the store. And we are telling them that that would be a perfect opportunity for them to figure out a new pattern.
Because it's really not safe today the way they're doing it.
Yeah, and they'll have, they'll have far less physical ability to do that in the future. You know, the design has a mountable curb so that we can get fire trucks and things like that through. So, it will be physically possible but less comfortable. And we share your opinion and have continued to talk to them about that.
And it is drivable as need be, but we don't need to be having the trucks beat it up constantly every day. Great, thank you. All right, so with no updates, I was requested that, Mary Lou, you had, you wanted to respond to one of my questions. You change your mind?
So, I had requested that the chair
You had a good of the order?
For good of the order. And what it was about was in looking at the Transportation Benefit District, I had assumed our conversation would have been a super deep dive today. And in getting ready for this, I went and read the transportation element of the comp plan and realized that that's probably a starting point for some of the conversation. But we really just did Q and A today. I don't think I need to go through the broader, general questions I brought. That can be done at a later date. But thank you for considering it.
Send those to me. Great. One last chance for any public comment? All right, jump up there, David.
I do have a, let's see if we can get it to work. Before we get to that, the sec, maybe it was discussed, but how long it's taking this Second and Sunset project to go, it's just kind of ridiculous. And I guess it's, oh, right. And I guess it's my, my school tax dollars rather than my city tax dollars being wasted by all the time and the flagging and all the stuff. It's just crazy how slow it's taking them to get some concrete and get, they got forms, you know, and then they sit there for a week or more before they get any concrete in them. And I don't know, there's, I know there's complicated utility issues too. But anyway, it's frustrating. Second, the water tank up at the top of Talis 7. The color is great. If you can use that color on water tanks to keep them not visible. But all the hardware attached to it is not, is not that color. And it's amazing how it shows up, but, which gets to the water tank issue. I'm definitely think a better site to build the water tank is over on the County Island site or former King County site, still WashDOT site compared to putting on Highlands Drive and all of that. I'm just concerned about that property to, we really make sure we understand that nice flat area. That was the fill site for the soil. It was the junk soil from the original construction. And then, in 2000, and then it's the junk site for the, when they did Exit 18 and did the full intersection. And you go in there in the winter and only thing that's growing are real short cottonwood trees because they just grow in the water. The water table is right at the surface of the rocks. And then, in the summer, it's just bone dry. And if you go back to the iMAP picture from 2002, that's what I have on here, but you can do it maybe yourself, you'll see the standing water on that site during the time when the trees are all green. And there's trucks and stuff shown in the picture of 2002 on iMAP. And there's standing water right where you're going to put that. Below that level site, there's also active springs that have been active way before, you know, all the time. And the springs generally right above the site, north of Camp Creek, were just events when they were over infiltrating up above. You had, with the Scotch broom, you were getting these sudden, beautiful springs right there with the Scotch broom growing on the hillside. But there's definitely, Camp Creek goes way back. Camp Creek was a creek a long time ago. There used to be waterworks there and all of that in the olden days that got blown out by the, by this, by the blowout. But, so we're still, we've got an interesting site. Let's make sure we're not, got the same kind of junk that we have on Pad 3, which is not nearly as much of a problem. If a water tank on that kind of a site would be a lot worse than fake grass on that kind of a site. Thank you.
Thank you, David. All right. So, with that, I see we've completed our agenda and nothing left. So, we are adjourned. Thank you.